This is Taos County Commission Board Meeting, March 20, March 19th, first day of spring. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The time is 9:03. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll please?
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Vihil.
Present.
Commissioner Brush.
Present.
Vice Chair Mascherini.
Present.
Chair Romero.
Present. Thank you. Move on to the inspirational devotional. Does anyone have one today? If not, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Miguel Romero, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. who?
I salute the
the Z symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. Thank you. Move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Brush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vihil.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And we are now on public comments. Any member of the public wishing to speak? Shall limit their comments to three minutes. You can speak on any topic. Come, go ahead, come forth. Please state your name and where you reside. And Commissioner Brush, would you please keep time?
John Stutzman, Elclot. Ah, gee, and bounce. Gentlemen, thank you for giving me this opportunity. It's not been my ideal retirement to wake up early in the morning to attend meetings regarding veterans' final disposition. However, it has come to been five years since this project first started. And I got drafted in the past two years to provide my insights and comments to you all. And I know we're getting close and we're completing things. Now, I look at the building and it's not complete yet. I know that things move slowly on budgets and depending and stuff like this. And I know you've all dedicated this as a number one priority, as well as our state legislators. And other people throughout the country have looked at this. Veterans have looked at this. And we need it to be done because we are getting to the terminal stage of our lives. Many are older than me, many are younger than me, and they're suffering. And we need to correct this situation and have a national cemetery in which to dispose of their remains. And I appreciate your efforts. And this process is one that is beyond my comprehension on how long it takes to get things done. But I hope that maybe we can get our local contractors involved in this paving project and finish what we started so that we can move ahead and get the federal designation that we all desire. Thank you for your time and your patience. And I hope I don't have to wake up so early in the morning and come and address you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Go ahead, Neil.
Good morning. My name is Neil Philkey from Yanosan One. It's my privilege to announce before the Taos, before the Taos news comes out that Panasco Girls Basketball are now state champs. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Anyone else in the room would like to speak on any topic? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the minutes of March 5th. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I would move to, I would move to approve with just one small edit on line 64 regarding public comment. It mentions, I think that Joe made a comment about Taos Puzz alive. It was actually Sam, Mr. Sam Richardson of Taos Walking Tours.
Okay. Any other changes or corrections? Was that a motion then to approve with it? We have a motion by Commissioner Brush. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vihil. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vihil.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Move on to presentations. This is the presentation of the Taos County Solid Waste Analysis. David Yonkey of New Gen Strategies and Solutions. Mr. Yonkey.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. For the record, my name's Dave Yonkey. I'm the president of New Gen Strategies and Solutions, and I'll be presenting our findings today. Can I get the PowerPoint up on the screen? Well, it's getting pulled up. Just to give you a little background. So New Gen Strategy Solutions, we're a 60-person firm. Next, please. Thank you. We're, just so you know, we're a 60-person firm. All we focus on is working with utilities, solid waste, water, wastewater, electric utilities, doing cost service studies, feasibility studies. So this is what we do for a living, just so you know. Next. Give you a little background on myself real quick. And the reason I do this, I think it's important when I come with findings, analysis. I've been doing this for a long time. It's not like the first time I've ever done this, and I hope I get it right. So I've been doing this about 30 years. I'm actually conducting a similar study for Santa Fe County right now. I did one for them about 10 years ago. And so do a lot of work here in New Mexico, actually working with TRC in Roswell as well on solid waste issues. Okay, we'll get into the presentation now. Next, please. So our agenda, what I want to do, I'm going to walk through what our scope of services was, our background as far as your system. Then I'm going to talk to you about the cost of service that we completed. I did some benchmarking that I think you will find informative and shows that Taos County benchmarks very favorably against some of the other counties. So I think that'll be interesting. And then finally, I'll provide findings and recommendations. Next. So on our scope of services, we were asked to, first of all, conduct a cost service study. I'll describe and explain that on the next slide. But then part of that, we also developed a 10-year capital improvement plan for all your equipment so that you can fund and have rates, so you can be purchasing equipment on a regular basis. One of the things with solid waste equipment, you know, it's not like me where I can drive a 10-year-old Suburban and you just take care of it with maintenance, with garbage trucks, roll-off trucks, et cetera. As they get older, maintenance costs can be very cost prohibitive where you save money when you're replacing them versus spending all the money on maintenance. So we developed a five-year revenue requirement, which is a five-year forecast, and calculated the revenues to see, are you generating sufficient revenue? Are you short? You know, what's the, the status? And then I'll provide, I presented the findings to the staff, and now I'm presenting them to you. Next. So a little background, continuing on. So these are the eight convenience centers that you have, and I'll just have them up there. But, you know, they're open Tuesday through Saturday, so they're open, you know, a long time. I do want to tell you, we've done studies for other folks. In some counties, they'll be open three days a week or four days a week. And you can see these are open. You provide a very high level of service. So that's something, just to show you, which is good. Next, please. This just, and I know that map is small there, but that shows where the, the convenience centers are located. The thing I want to talk to you about are your fees. So these are the fees that you charge. So the three I want to highlight, and I'm going to bounce around a little bit. First of all, the second from bottom, your regular accounts. So these are your folks. They get four punch cards, so there's 48 punches on it. That's $120 a year. You know, you pay $30 a quarter, you get that punch ticket and you can use it. You know, a lot of times people go once a week or every other week, depending how close or, you know, what have you. But that's the majority of your accounts. You also have some accounts that they have waste management pick up. So they, you know, they don't want to go to the convenience center, so they have it picked up at their property. Now, that costs more, and it's, you know, a high level of service. Those folks, they only pay $30 and then they get one, one punch card because, you know, occasionally if there are things that don't fit in the carts, et cetera, they'll want to take it to the convenience center. The third one I want to touch on is at the top, your disability accounts. You only charge $30 here. And I'll talk more about this. And again, a lot of our clients, some will have disability fees. But usually a disability fee is 5% or 10%. You might see 15%. This is very unusual that you have a 75% discount. So, and again, sensitive folks with disabilities, but that's a really high discount, 75%. The other thing we saw is that there are over 1,000 accounts that have this, so we'll talk about it. Looks high, like, you know, folks might have, you know, if someone had passed on, that property still stayed at that lower rate. And so we'll talk about that, but that was something we, we saw there. Next, please. This is just, I'm not going to walk through this, but you can see here's the tonnage for the various convenience centers. And that's just, you know, you can take a minute to look at that and see which one you use and what its volumes are. Next. So let's get into the cost of service. So I've got a couple terms on the next slide I'll walk through. When we develop a cost of service study, there are some basic steps. So first of all, we develop the test year. So we use your current fiscal year budget, fiscal year 2024 budget, which you're currently in. We develop an equipment replacement plan. One of the things that you find when you are purchasing equipment, you can have spikes where it ebbs and flows. You know, if you buy one truck, it might be $180,000. The next year, you're just buying some roll-off containers that are $14,000 to $16,000. And then two years later, another $180,000. And so you have spikes. So when you develop a 10-year average and adjust for inflation, it lets you know what you have to recover through rates. And a lot of our customers or clients like you, then if you use that money, you spend it that year. If you don't spend it that year, it goes into equipment reserve. Think of it as your savings account. So it's there. So when you have to spend more the following year, two, three years, you have the money. And all of a sudden, you don't have to hit the general fund, you know, what have you for that. So we develop a revenue requirement forecast incorporating your 2024 budget in the equipment. Again, we forecasted this out for five years, so it gives a good long picture of what we see. And then we come up with the cost of service and rates. Next. So one thing, this is going to be real simple. I'm not going to turn it into an accounting class, but I'm going to use a couple terms. So when we refer to a revenue requirement, all we're saying is we start with your budget, your county budget for the solid waste services. We, that's all your capital improvement. So we build the 10-year capital improvement plan into there. We use all your salaries, labor benefits, O and M, et cetera, and if there's any debt outstanding. And so that comes up with your total cost to operate the operation on an annual basis, which is just called a revenue requirement. Next, please. So again, the test year, it's just for a normal year. So for instance, if you had received a big grant, let's say you do, you had received a $150,000 grant to do something for the solid waste utility, but it's not something you normally receive. We do not include that as a revenue offset because that's not something you get every year. So again, setting it on a normal year. And then we have in the forecast used inflation factors. So bottom line, it's budgeted from fiscal year 2024. It's going to cost you to operate about $1,858,000 a year. And then by 2028, it's projected with inflation that that cost will go to a little over $2.1 million. Next. So all I'm going to do is, and you received a copy of the report. In the report, there's a detailed analysis where we went through all the frontline equipment that you have for the solid waste utility. We looked at the useful lives. So we look at how long it should last, the cost, you spread that cost or amortize it over that period of time to come up with what the cost should be on average, which is the $173,000 a year. Quite frankly, this is one of the biggest things for our clients. When we do this component, it really helps them. That's the one schedule in the back that shows a lot of detail on all their equipment so they can really have a capital plan. And a lot of the folks like having that. Next. So bottom line, we look at, okay, this is our forecast. Remember, if I just told you the cost of the utility, it's going to cost you about 1.8 million in 2024 to run it up to 2.1 million by 2028. If you look up their top left corner, it says $1,685,000. Now, you may just ask, hey, I thought you said it was like a million eight, $1,850,000. One of the things we do, we subtract off miscellaneous revenues to come up with the net amount of costs that you have to recover through rates. So we use the revenue offsets from recycling revenue or other sources of revenue to come up with the net amount that you have to recover through rates. As you can see, with that fiscal year 2024, you're going to under-recover by about $691,000. And then that grows primarily due to inflation. And by fiscal year 2028, you would be under-recovering about $900,000 a year. So then you would be relying upon the general fund to make up for that shortfall. It's important to mention, and I'll show this to you, you have not had a rate increase on the solid waste side in over 10 years. So we'll talk about that when we get into this. Next, please. So here's some good news that I'm going to show you. So again, I'm not going to go through all the numbers. But bottom line, if you look, the revenue requirement, which I defined for you, that top line, that's showing the $1,685,000 in fiscal year 2024, that you have to recover through rates. And again, that's just growing by 2028 to a little over $1,009,000. What we do here is we're looking at the number of properties that pay a fee. So if you look up their total residential properties, you have 14,006 properties. But some of those, like 1,000 of them, get that discount and they're only paying $30. You also have a significant number, it's about 4,000 or 5,000, that, you know, they use waste management, so they only pay $30. So we go, okay, bottom line, those folks that are paying, you know, the $120, that's just under 8,800 accounts if you look there. So your cost of service is $192, and it grows to $216 over time. You're currently charging 120. So you're under-recovering. Shouldn't be a surprise because you haven't had a rate increase in 10 years. The other key thing, we'll get to it. Again, you'll see shortly, you compare very favorably even with where the cost is in 2028 versus where other counties are. Next. So the benchmarking, if you go over to the next slide, we benchmarked against eight other counties. You can see them there. Let's go to the next slide. If you, that, that's fine. So these are the counties that we benchmarked against. There's a lot of information in the report. If you have difficulty sleeping at night, I encourage you to read the benchmarking section. That should help you. But there's a lot of good information. If you go to the next slide, I want to show you where some financial cost comparisons. So I'm not going to go through all this data. I'm, I'm just going to hit some highlights for you. So right now, Taos County, you're at the top, $30 a quarter. You pay that. That's $120 a year. Look at some of the, San Miguel, they charge $167 to $200, depending on when it's paid. Torrance County, $60.50 per quarter. That's double what you're, you're charging per quarter. So they're paying $242 right now. Lincoln is 75 to $80 per quarter. Now, they are doing a curbside collection, so it's a higher level of service. But, you know, it's $320. And then going down the list, Rio Riva, they're at, they have a curbside program and collection centers, which are $153. So that gives you an idea. A lot of those are in the 200 to 240, $250 range. Next. So let's go to the findings and recommendations. So I'll go through our findings. I know there's a lot of print, but I'm just going to focus on the, the bold here. So again, the county offers a 75% discount to disabled customers. You have it in the ordinance that it says they should be fully disabled to receive that benefit. Again, there are over 1,000 customers out of 14,000 receiving it. That's a high percentage. It's like 7.5% of the customers. So if you're going to offer a disability discount, you want to make sure the folks that are receiving it should be receiving it. So there, one of the things we would recommend is a recertification. You do have a certification process in the ordinance, so it's just talking about, hey, we're going to start fresh slate. Let's see who's qualifying and then move forward with that. And so that's one of our thoughts and recommendations. Again, we provided you the formal stock, rolling stock replacement. Key thing I want to mention, this is the fourth bullet. Five of the eight counties benchmarked as part of this analysis assess their residents a mandatory fee. And you're cheaper than a lot of them right now. And even with what we're proposing over five years to go to, you'd still be cheaper or at the low end, which is a great story to be able to tell your, your residents. So we would recommend a rate increase. If you go to the next slide, we developed two scenarios for you. We would be financially, either of these scenarios put you in a good, solid position. I'm not going to go through all the numbers, and I know they're small, but in this scenario, what we're recommending is a $24 annual increase, starting in fiscal year 2025. So that would be July 1 of 2024 with a $24 annual increase. If you look at second from the bottom, your regular accounts. So this is the folks that use it all the time. $120, you can see that goes to $144, 168, my vision's fading, and 192, and then $216. So phasing it in over time. The disability discount, you can see there's a flat $15 discount we would offer. We would recommend a $15 discount. So you can see if I'm a regular customer and I'm paying $144 in 2025, if I provide the verification that I've, I've got a disability, then I only pay $129. So it's a $15 discount. Next. That shows, bottom line, if you go to the bottom right corner, you can see by 2028, if you phase in those rate increases, you have a positive over-recovery of, oh man, I gotta get better glasses here. $59,000, thank you. So I knew there weren't parentheses around it. But you can see you're narrowing the shortfall from 690,000, and it's narrowing, and then you get a positive cash flow. Going to the next slide, we recommended a second scenario where there are increases every other year, but they're bigger increases. So what you're looking at here is two $50 increases. So in fiscal year 2025, for a regular account, you'd go from $120 to $170, not an increase in 2026. But then in 2027, another $50 increase in your setup. Because you have those increases quicker, you reach a positive over-recovery the next year. If you go to the next slide. So you can see you hit the over-recovery one year earlier at about $153,000. And then it goes down to 96,000. And if it's going down, that's just because of inflation. You know, you're not doing another rate increase in 2028, but costs continue to go up. So that puts you in a good position. Believe I just have one last slide with the final recommendations. So what we would recommend is that you would implement one of those two rate increases. Again, you have not had a rate increase since like 2012. Costs continue to go up. Equipment has gone up. You just, you just have to catch up. We would recommend that the disability discount be $15 off whatever the standard rate is. And offer that discount. We would ask that those folks recertify with the county to make sure, again, that they're fully, like the ordinance says, that they're fully disabled. And again, that's in the ordinance. Your bin rental rates, you don't do much in this area at all, a very small amount of your business. Those rates have not been raised in quite a while. We'd recommend 10% annual increase for the fiscal years 25 through 28. And there's more detail in the report on that. Evaluating expansion of the county's recycling services. I did spend time up here touring some of the convenience centers. Also, the current recycling center, as well as the armory, which was being looked at. We would, from a recycling standpoint, recommend that the county look at, you know, is there something from a coordination with the city on how you would provide those services? In the report, I believe it was section three, where we wrote about some of the different staffing options and equipment. And it's something for you to consider. So we can talk more later if there are questions, but I'll just say that right now. Also, there were a couple policy issues that we were asked. And again, we've been doing this a long time, so I'm glad to do that. Question came up, and we would recommend you have some folks in the county that are, or I'm sorry, outside your county that are closer to one of your convenience centers than their county's convenience center. I would encourage you to, you know, sell them the standard punch ticket. You know, it's a little revenue for you. It provides them a convenient, affordable disposal option. So it doesn't end up in a bar ditch and a Royal, what have you. So that is, from our standpoint, a no-brainer. And then the final one, and we've run into this sometimes where, you know, someone say, I lost my card. It's pretty standard in the utility business that you say, okay, you know, you lost it. There's a fee towards getting a replacement. Well, right now, a card is $30. So if you say you lost it, there should be, there's typically, hey, there's a, a lost fee. You know, if you, and it happens with a lot of utility services. We'd set it at $25 for that lost card. And then as your rate's increasing, increase the lost card fee of $40 in 2027 as your rate's increasing. And go to the last slide. I believe that's everything. I'd be glad to take any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Yonkey, for the presentation and the work that you've done. You were just talking Um, you were just talking about customers in neighboring counties that might be closer to our transfer stations or convenience centers, as we're calling them today. Um, would that potentially explain the high load level at the Chamaizal transfer station? Because that, to me, is always a surprise that that is so high. And probably our staff can answer that question better, better than I can, because I'm just curious why that one is the highest of all of our stations.
So I will let, uh, staff come up to answer that one. Uh, because we didn't go in to look at the source of it, but it could be a combination, or it could be density also.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, Madam, Mr. Chairman, um, no, there's not too many, um, punch cards. Doesn't make that much of a difference, because, uh, how many do you have up in town? I don't know. Up in, uh, town, probably not. There's only, what, like eight maybe? Uh, punch cards got of county residents of, from Rio Riba. So, so there's not that many that, that would make that much difference on all the volume of, of trash that's going up to the transfer stations over there. Um, it does seem like there's those usual vehicles that are going up almost on a daily basis. My drivers, when they are up there, they notice these vehicles are basically the same vehicle. So I, I had, maybe they're picking up the trash for somebody else and using the transfer station for, for the same vehicle to be going up regularly as, uh, not. And, and it is, as you saw that, it's a thousand one hundred tons a year, as opposed to the others, which is the second busiest. And, um,
So may I just add to that? So you don't see that as being odd that, that, that it's much higher in that area?
I do.
You know, because residents, if you look at the amount of residents.
And they're going, the truckload, big loads, you know, trailer loads. That's why I think we should limit the amount of, of trailers that go up there, because they're filling up the bins pretty quick. I mean, they're already going with eighteen-foot trailer on top of the truckload. Um, and I do tell my guys, you know, to punch them according to the weight, I mean, to the, the bed of the truck, which is not, you know, four punches for a food load is not, um, you know, they're eighty pounds per punch. And you know, with a big truckload like that, there's more than three hundred and twenty pounds.
What we are hearing in the recommendations is that, that's not necessarily a bad thing, as long as they are paying for the service, correct? That's, that's what's key here, is that we capture.
Yeah, they're slippery slope, because, and we've talked about, we didn't go into, you know, looking at where it's coming from. You don't want it illegally dumped.
Right.
But I think it's safe to say, and we've seen this elsewhere, where people take advantage of the system also. Where if you're supposed to have one punch for eighty pounds, and we've run into this in other places, where someone, not saying it's happening here, because we're not out there looking, but we've seen it before where someone, you know, they're industrious, and they say, hey, I'll swing by and get your, your garbage for ten bucks or whatever, and cheaper than waste management. And then all of a sudden, they got twenty loads in their pickup and a trailer, and they're bringing it. And if they try to game the system and say, you know, two punches or something, that's how they make money then. So that does, if you want to look at that, it's a balance between, you don't want illegal dumping, but you also don't want people taking advantage of the system, which it sounds like people may be doing that. The only way to really look at it is really start looking at the loads that are coming in, tracking those, and do you want to do something about that? And it really, that, that becomes a policy issue there. Because if you were to start charging the number of punches, they're going to use the punch cards up pretty quick. And I'm imagining some, some of you, depending whose area that is, might receive phone calls.
Right. And, and if I could just add, I mean, I think we all understand the, the logic here is that if we don't all pay our fair share, then it's going to, it's going to, um, someone has to carry the burden. And that's the same in everything that happens regarding, um, whether it be taxes or... So, yeah, I, I think it's important to understand, uh, to try to understand what's happening there, because someone is carrying that burden.
Agree a hundred percent.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner Brush.
I have one more, Mr. Chair, if I could go one more time. Um, I really appreciate the, the work that obviously our staff has put in with you. Um, I really appreciate the long-term view, you know, like what's it going to take to keep our equipment? Um, where it needs to be, what are our costs over the next five to ten years? And the thing that kind of hit me is that if we do nothing, business as usual, we're almost two million dollars in the hole in the next, by four years from now. And that, to me, is, um, feels a little frightening and a little irresponsible. That said, not knowing how we're going to approach this and try to prevent us from getting the county two million dollars in a hole for this service, do we know, and again, this might be a question for management and staff and not you, like what, what kind of timeframe would we be looking at for next steps? Um, if we were to look at one of these proposed rate increases and implement them, what kind of timing could our community expect to, to see that happen?
Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I would say that this is my hope on, on this proposal, is now that we've been able to see the, the data, and, and you guys were able to, we able to dissect and understand where it's at. I've had, last week, I've had a chance to look at it. My way to kind of unveil this and, and support the two options would take this into, that's why it's not an action item today, is we have a works study session about this. Uh, it is something that we're going to be having with roads as well, so this could be one of the agenda topics. And then we would transition into a follow-up meeting that we would, um, provide a response to either one of the scenarios that would be an action item at the next commission meeting or a couple of meetings down the road. Um, I do want to point out one thing to kind of retract back to your comments, and I'll get back to this, just so I don't forget. Uh, in the Penasco, Greater Penasco area, waste man, waste management doesn't provide service. So that's why there's such a large number. It's not like we're fortunate within our communities right now, between Red River, uh, Cuesta, um, you know, Rosseco, Honda, all these, these general, uh, toss vicinity, we have waste manager to pick up, so you're able to, they're able to shore up that, that tonnage and take it to the landfill, and where it's recorded. At this current time, and I'm working with, uh, Dan Darnell, about trying to see if they can provide service, because they are our approved vendor. At that point, that would probably, uh, reduce the amount of, of tonnage that is being taken to there if that individual chooses to have that, a door pickup, at-home pickup. So, so that just one, that's a contributing factor of why we have such a large one. I do feel that there is maybe some individuals outside that our neighboring communities, Rio Riba, that just find it logistically, and that's where me and Dave talked about, that we would still sell them cards. Because this happens to the Mota area. I have a cousin just bought a house right on the border, and he has to take his stuff to here, so he's going to purchase a card, because it's logistically, it's closer to here. A lot of unknowns. Originally, we were supposed to have the recycling center would be a contribution from the town of Taos. That's kind of up in the air, because at this point, I'm not sure if they are identified what they want to use of that facility, and we haven't come to an agreement till the space study was completed. And that's just discussions that we've had, uh, with the mayor. Um, so at this point, if we're having to, to, like Dave mentioned, uh, identify a location and modify a location that's going to be a recycling center, that's where this fee is, is kind of, we're looking at, at a, at a wide lens of this, because we're going to be able to capture that of all those improvements.
Okay.
It's.
No, thank you. And, um, that, that's useful information, I think, for all of us. Um, and my, my question, again, it might not even be for, for us to answer here, but you mentioned in the study, um, for a recycling program, a cost, an annual cost of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which is in line with what staff here has been talking to us about. So it's like right, right aligned with that. Do any of us happen to know what the town of Taos, their amount that they used to collect? I think it was as part of their water bill, their environment fee, that did go to the recycling program? Because maybe that could, I know the mayor has before talked about that being one way that they could contribute. How, and my question is like, how much does this, does that maybe bring down that four hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year fee for the county? If they were to contribute that? I don't have that number. I don't know if any of us do.
Yeah, no, I, I, in discussions with the Public Works Director at the time, I believe it was, uh, it was hidden in their overall fees with their, their sewer and, um, water fees within that component, but I think it was somewhere to the tone of like a dollar eighty is what I thought would, would be, would be a contributing factor to the overall recycling fund. I thought that's what it was, but I'm not sure.
That, that sounds about right. My, my question is more, it's like, what, what's the annual total that they got from that fee that could possibly go toward the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year annual cost? But I don't know. Again, I don't know. It's not a fair question to us, because it's not our business.
I, I do have a budget upstairs. I could probably pull that, uh, but it's more of an operating budget, but I can see the revenue that they were able to generate for this.
Thank you.
Remember, it's what, seventy cents per customer. But I also think, and sort of expressed to Jason, is I think the town is going to have to do a study too. And I think they should hire New Gen, uh, to do that study, because that seventy cents might not be the correct rate anymore. It's probably not.
And thank you, Mr. Harmio, because I think that, that's a very important point, that I know people have been waiting for us to do something about recycling, at least some people have. Not, not everybody's been looking for that, but, um, we can't do something about rates without the work of someone like Next Gen, because government can't just randomly pick a number to increase to. We have to have the data and the justification for it. So, um, that's why it's kind of taken us this long to get to this point. Like, we, you know, government's just not allowed to pick and choose how much we want to charge people for a service.
Okay.
Last comment. We are already providing service, uh, some sort of recycling service. So I think it's important, because sometimes, as you've indicated, Commissioner Brush, you know, um, sometimes there's, well, there's this belief that it's not happening, but there is some level of recycling taking place. We just want to definitely open a site here in, in the near, in the valley, a little bit closer.
Thank you, Commissioner Rahil, and thank you, Mr. Yanki. Thank you all. Great presentation. Move on to the resolutions and ordinances, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number Twenty, twenty-four dash twelve. Resolution certifying the county maintained road inventory. Joe Fernandez.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Joe.
Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just want to be able to clarify that we have had a couple, uh, changes to the road inventory. Uh, right now, we are adding, which is County Road One-One-Three, Arroyo del Alamo Circle, which is the, um, area of the, uh, Veteran Cemetery. That is in total of one point two-one miles. Uh, that will be added to, uh, to the inventory for twenty twenty-four. A couple of changes that did take place on some others, which was for District Three. Um, that particular section of road is a beta. Um, previously on last year's, it was listed as a beta lane, and it was supposed to have been a beta road. So that change took place this time around. Another was through the District Three as well. Uh, that particular roadway was, um, Sage, actually, I'm sorry, um, um, bear with me just a little bit. Let me go ahead and grab that. Um, that section of roadway is, there's so many roads, Stakeout Road. Uh, the only changes we made to that was the ending termini, and as far as the description of that roadway, it was in a longer, uh, length of roadway, uh, which did not add up to the amount of miles. The miles were correct, but the description needed to be reflecting to that. Other than that, um, everything remained the same, other than one increase. Now, the total amount of increase that took place brought up to our current, uh, total miles on our inventory of three hundred and twenty-seven point three-five miles. Other than that, that was about the only thing that we made those adjustments for. Nice stuff. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? No questions? Okay, so you, and you need, you do need action on this to approve.
Yes.
I didn't obtain a motion to approve, uh, the road inventory as presented.
I'll second that. Oh, you didn't make the motion? I'm sorry. I thought you were making a motion.
Yeah, I can make a motion. Uh, you seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. I made a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Rahil. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Rahil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherena?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that one was quick.
Yeah, thank you.
And we move on into contracts, amendments, MOUs, and bids. Uh, authorization and approval for the county manager to sign a proposal and/or contract with the facilities built for paving of the entrance road to the Veteran Cemetery. Uh, Mr. Chris Madrid.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, I'm here today on behalf of, uh, Richard Sanchez. Uh, we're talking about spending, uh, supplemental money that we just received recently, and we have another opportunity for supplemental money on another project that we have, and it's due on Thursday. So Richard is working with our grants writer to try to get that grant in on time. So I offered to, to do this. Admittedly, uh, this is the first time, uh, in my career where I've actually have a project where I have a very personal interest. This is, uh, uh, thanks to all the efforts. This is going to be my, my resting home. And I've, my son and I have ridden, ridden our bikes around there, and, uh, I guess I can call these gentlemen, the Sinos, going, going forward. We received an email from DFA, uh, in December, saying, hey, there's extra funds. Do you have a project that you can put these funds to use? Uh, we had a quick meeting, and within five minutes, Richard said, uh, the cemetery's where we want to go. So we wrote that grant, and then we didn't hear anything from it. Uh, turned out, uh, we did get awarded, I'm not sure when, the grant was sent to the town. And, uh, they, they had our grant for a while. Uh, French called up and said, hey, uh, we got this thing. Who does it belong to? So about six weeks ago, we got the grant. Uh, for government to spend down a million dollars in a matter of, uh, a few months is, is a heavy lift. Um, the idea of doing, uh, an RFP, uh, for a road project, uh, one, you lose the time of notice. Two, to do the RFP, you have to go get it designed first. And then by the time you do that, you write, you, you do the proposal, you get it noticed, then you have to interview folks. Uh, we couldn't do it on time. The quickest way to do this is to use the state contract. Uh, we looked at facility build, because they're a design-build entity. Their engineers are embedded. They have contracts with engineers. We just couldn't take the risk of not getting this done on time and spending these dollars down. Uh, the, the, these funds go away, uh, June thirty-first. And we've worked with facility build. They're already on this project. And so we're asking to you today, in order to expedite this project, process, is to grant the county manager permission to enter into agreement, so that we can make sure we get this done.
Questions for Mr. Madrid?
Yeah, I, I do. So thank you for that, um, information. So facility build, uh, obviously has a, a crew already on the, uh, building itself. They're pulling in another crew to work on the road, right? Because obviously, um, it would be a delay to have the same folks in, plus I think there's expertise in each area. That is correct, right? So we have, um, someone that's going to start on the road fairly quickly? Is that what I'm hearing?
We, we believe this is the quickest
Right.
path towards getting the road, uh, constructed. I, I would say that facility build is already invested in the overall project. They're aware of the project.
Right, right.
Uh, how they do it, uh, whether it's their own folks, whether they, they pull in subcontractors, uh, we hold them accountable for the end result. Uh, it wouldn't, it would be inappropriate, I believe, to tell them how they should.
Right, right. Okay. And that's, that's good to know. And I, I, I just want to clarify, uh, that that's what we're relying on, is the end project, and, and that, uh, these folks are going to get the right people in, and they know what they're doing. So, um, are we on schedule? Will we, do you know? If this project, of course, we just threw, you know, we're now doing this additional, uh, paving. Do you know if that's going to be done quickly? We're going to be on target? Again, on, on schedule, excuse me?
Yes. This, uh...
It's not going to delay us in, in opening the cemetery?
No, there'd be no, no delay in that, in that aspect. Uh, in, in the private sector, you're able to make a lot of decisions a lot quicker. Uh, in, in the public sector, things do take a, a lot more time. I, I appreciate Mr. Strutman's, uh, uh, words today. I can tell you DFA looks at this as a successful project. Uh, it, sadly, uh, if you talk to DFA, a lot of capital outlay is sitting there. Uh, it takes, uh, I have a project, a twelve million dollar project in Rio Riba County. I secured the funds six years ago. It still hasn't broken ground. And so, uh, as far as the state's concerned, on a comparative basis, this project is going, uh, is well-regarded. Uh, they, they're bragging about, they're using us as an example of how to get things done. Uh, it doesn't mean it's not taking longer than we, we would hope.
Right.
But this project's on time.
Great. And I see it as a... Great, and I see it as a success as well and certainly thank the folks that have, you know, advocated for this from the very get go. So thank you very much and please know that we're doing the same on this end. And we're going to be able to celebrate pretty soon. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioners? Commissioner Romero?
Just quick, can you explain to us the difference of way you facilities build compared to going out to bid a contract, how much time?
So facility build, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, they're on the state contract. So they're already pre-approved. They went through a competitive process to get on the state contract. But that allows us to immediately go and select them. If we were to decide to go another route, because it's a million dollars, anything over $60,000 requires requires a request for proposals. So that would kick off the need to first procure an architect or a design entity to tell us the design. So we can put that in the RFP. Then we write the RFP. And then internally, we're going into our budget season right now. So we're already, our staff is already pressed. We get the RFP out. Amount of time has to be spent to give people a chance to respond. And then we have to set up interviews and and then make a selection at that point. So given that we only have a matter of months, that would be a very difficult process to, it would be an impossible process to pull off, in in my estimation.
So RFP process, if if we can go back, like, can you estimate, guesstimate? If we went that route, is it three months, six months to from start to finish if we went through an RFP process?
Commissioner Rahil, we want to just, as I pointed out, we have to spend the money by June.
Right, no, no, we're just talking about in general, a process as such.
If all the stars aligned, and I I frankly, is it 30 days or is it two weeks?
Well, Mr. Chairman likes to do 30 days for a request for proposal. Statutorily, I think we can get away with 15 days per the state purchasing code. And that's 15 days of the advertisement process. So generally, we practice 30 days. Everything that Mr. Madrid described is accurate. So it can take anywhere from 30 to 60 days before you select a engineer.
Right. Sorry, my point is, and I do believe we're going the right route because I I get that it would take much longer and we would not be able to fulfill this this contract and and hold on to that money. I also want to remind folks that I remember for the Pilata Bridge, we didn't get anyone to respond and it took, we had to go back out again. And so that does happen sometimes. And so that would then delay it again, right?
Right. The same thing happened with historic county courthouse. We put it out to bid three times and then we got permission from the state to negotiate an agreement with Franken Construction. And so that probably took us nine months to go through the three bid after it was designed, that was just for actual construction.
Right, thank you, I just, I just wanted to.
Okay, good questions, good answers. RFP processes can take quite a long time. So we basically almost have no option then to go ahead and do it through quality build, can provide design and, you know, contractor to get it done before that June 30th date. Is that correct?
That's correct. I I think otherwise, Mr. Chairman, we'd be putting the project at risk or getting these dollars spent at risk.
Okay. Any further comments, discussions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, motion to to approve, I'm looking for the actual words here. Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the Resolution Number 2024-12, a resolution certifying the county maintained road, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, allowing Mr. our county manager to sign the proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Rahil.
Thanks.
Commissioner Rahil.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Brush. Any further discussion or questions? If not, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Rahil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranos?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Chris. And we move on to apartment matters, discussions only, regarding draft of new grant-making guidelines for the county lodgers tax program. This is Jessica Stern.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Thanks for having me, it's good to see you. I'm here to present new draft guidelines for the county lodgers tax grant program. I think, as you all know, I was tasked with restarting the grant program after it had been dormant for a number of years. We had a new advisory board that had been appointed at that time. And together, myself and the advisory board saw this as an opportunity to take a look and revise the guidelines to see if there were an opportunity to make them more accessible, to publicize them more broadly and to align them with the values around the conversation of tourism in this county. I want to give gratitude to our clerk Valerie for running that grant program for so many years. So thank you, and I'm happy to take it off your plate. So again, we wanted to create something that would stand the test of time with with a changing commission and changing board members. And also take into consideration the findings of the destination stewardship plan and that research and what was coming out of it. So today, I'm here to present this and to ask if there's any feedback that we can incorporate into the guidelines so that we can reopen the grant cycle ahead of the upcoming fiscal year. The biggest changes or the the new changes that I wanted to call out were that we wanted to create a mission statement and a vision statement and a set of goals for this program. And again, that was to give this some longevity. And so I'll just read that mission statement out loud for the record. The Taos County, this is again the draft mission statement. The Taos County Lodgers Tax Grant Program supports tourist-related facilities, attractions, and events within Taos County by investing in funding proposals that use advertising, publicizing, and promotion to enhance the lives and journeys of locals and visitors alike, and that highlight the uniqueness of Taos County's culture, heritage, innovation, and diversity. Our draft vision statement is that we seek to increase the quality of life across Taos County as it can be experienced by visitors and lived by inhabitants. I'll move forward on on page two. As you'll see in the document, it's mostly eligibility. This really hasn't changed from the former guidelines. It's it's quite a bit more fleshed out. And most of the reason this document is pretty long is that there's a lot of anticipation of questions. People, these are a lot of questions that I've received in the past of running this, the taking in grant applications. So a lot of this is just very specific. It also included language in the eligibility about businesses that might want to apply for lodgers tax and that we want them to be registered to do business. And that also if there are events that are taking place in the unincorporated areas, that they may need a special permit for that. So that information is included there. On page three, you'll see the new program goals that the advisory group worked on. I have to give credit to this advisory group. They were very patient with me to do a lot of whiteboarding exercises. They put a lot of thought and integrity into this process. And so these goals are really designed to be evaluated against so that we can make sure that we are meeting our desired outcomes of how we're investing public funds into the community. So again, I'll just read through these pretty quickly. The program aims to make investments that encourage reciprocity between the tourist and the local resident in such that tourists enrich and enhance the livability for locals, while the vibrancy and vitality of local collective culture of Taos County welcomes and supports responsible tourism. We seek to preserve the culture and heritage of Taos County, create a positive experience for visitors coming to Taos County, and as a result, create value and community pride by local residents. Encourage and support innovation and creativity in the promotion of activities that build upon past endeavors, while also broadening, strengthening, and deepening funded tourist-related attractions, facilities, and events. And ensure that awarded organizations strike a balance of inside and outside of county promotions. We also created three goals that are internal to the advisory board itself that are designed to keep their work accountable. And that is to ensure a positive and accountable experience for grant seekers and grantees through an approach that is values-based, timely, communicative, accountable, and transparent. Ensure that funding opportunities are broadly publicized in order to attract and fund the most diverse pool of grantees across the county as possible. And ensure responsible use of public funds as recommended by the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board through a commitment to the goals, mission, vision, and values stated in these guidelines. I'm going to jump ahead to page six. The interim pages are really more process oriented for how folks can apply and what exactly the review process is. But I want to jump ahead to the review criteria because then, again, this is the advisory board worked really hard to think about how do we score these applications so that they're meeting the goals? And we'll start to have information and data sets going forward about, are we meeting these goals? Are we achieving the mission and vision that we've stated? And so just again, really quickly to point out that the scoring is pretty thorough and speaks to those goals, there will be 100 points total for each application. The advisory board assigned these points and fleshed out exactly what those indicators that they're looking for in each application are going to be. And so that's why this is bulleted out. So they want to look at what type of program, facility, or event is it? And what type of audience is it for? That's 20% of the application. Does it meet the goals? The project advances one or more of the lodgers tax program goals as stated in the guidelines, that's 25%. Does the program, facility, or event create a positive experience and add value to Taos County? That's the reciprocity piece, that's 25%. Are the promotions innovative? We want to see that folks are thinking really creatively about how they're marketing Taos County. That's 20%. And then also, does the budget reflect the proposed activities and requested amount? That's 10%. And again, we've listed out some of the things that the advisory board is going to be looking for. I will say that all those bullets, again, were very intentional. We had long conversations about what each thing is, and I did exercises with them to help them rank that. So this is all very, very intentional. The rest of these guidelines are focused on the reimbursement process and agreements that we would ask them to make ahead of being considered for lodgers tax grants. I'm happy to stand for any questions. And again, I'd love to take any of your feedbacks so that we can incorporate these into the guidelines.
Thank you, Jessica. Questions?
I don't have any questions. I think this is great. I love the way it's broken down and it's very thoughtful. And it it's exactly what what we need in regard to using public money, that it, there's a benefit to not only the 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 folks coming in to enjoy these events, but those that live here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
For that thoughtfulness.
And Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Echo what Commissioner Rahil said. How intentional this is is very clear. And I I personally love the balance that you're striking between those of us who live here versus those of us who are coming in for a short time. I mean, the state mandates, right? It's in statute that we basically have to support tourism industry by spending our lodgers tax on tourism-related things. So, you know, whether we want it or not, like, we have, we have to do it. But this document, the vision statement, the mission statement, all throughout, it is so clear that that you all are thinking and that the board is thinking of everybody. I love the phrase, Taos County as it can be experienced by visitors and lived by inhabitants. That's that's wonderful. That said, I do have one little question.
Please.
On page two, when you mentioned jurisdictions, should Red River be included in there?
Yes, that is an oversight, thank you, I will include that.
Thank you very much for this work.
Thank you.
Does the county have lodgers tax guidelines in place now or is it something that you?
The the guidelines that were in place when Clerk Montoya was running the program are still mostly in place. And the advisory board has been using their best knowledge of what we've been creating along the way to approve applications. But we're not accepting applications right now until these new guidelines are in place and they can be promoted so that we have something really solid and concrete and can point to for why things are, why applications are scored a certain way and why they're approved and what funding, why certain funding amounts are recommended to you all to approve.
So something that was happening with lodgers taxes, that the revenues are increasing, they increased like like triple in in one year? Is that correct? Like about 300, 400,000 to about 1.2?
My understanding of how that increase took place before I started in this position was that it was the short-term rental online platforms that started collecting the lodgers tax on behalf of our jurisdictions. And so that's where we saw the bump in the promotional bucket. And I should clarify that this grant program only pertains to the promotional pocket, set of money that we can then grant back out to the community, which is why it's specific to advertising and promotions.
So we do have a fund balance at this point in time?
Yes. I don't have the exact amount off the top of my head, but it is large.
Yeah. But it is an amount that we probably should start thinking about what priorities we have in the area of lodgers tax.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Brush?
I just want to add to Ms. Stern's thanks to Clerk Montoya for laying a foundation for this and for taking it on, whether you felt like it or not, taking it on for for so long. So you've laid a good foundation. And I think that part of the, I don't know, part of the balance, part of the dormancy was simply pandemic related, too. There wasn't a lot of activity going on, right, during the pandemic. So it's the right time to revive it. So thank you both.
So so this is a draft or is this?
This is just discussion. We, as in myself and the advisory board, are going to take another pass at these that are meeting next week. We're going to look at all of the questions on the application and make sure that they all align so that we're gathering the information that speaks to this document. And then at the next meeting, I would bring a final version for you to approve. And I would say that in the meantime, if you have thoughts or questions or feedback and additions, that I'm happy to take those and incorporate them into the document.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any, is there any item in the consent agenda any commissioner would like to discuss further? If not, do we hear, do I have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve, but I also want to thank our finance director. She's obviously super busy. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Rahil, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Rahil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranos?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, and we'll move on. County managers report and matters, where is our county manager?
One second.
We're on hold then.
Thanks, Emily.
Oh, here he is, I think he's, because we're about there.
I don't got too much to report on today. Our planning department is still asking folks to fill out the survey as of yesterday. We have only 200 respondents to the comprehensive plan survey. I know Ms. Romero was working last week with the task news to ask the task news to help promote the survey. Ms. Romero did send out a second email. And you guys were probably included in that yesterday to fill out the survey. So we've need to get that in so we can move forward with that. Yesterday, the Public Works Department did submit a project feasibility form for Blueberry Hill Road. This is for the Transportation Project Fund Cycle. This is money that the state of New Mexico appropriates to the different highway commission districts. Our commission district is receiving 7 million for this as well. So so that got submitted, they're only looking for construction projects only. That's why we only submitted Blueberry Hill Road for that as well. And then just a reminder. And then, just a reminder, you got the emails yesterday about the joint meeting with the Town of Taos, at the Taos Council Chambers. And then that will take place on Thursday at 4:00 PM. On that same day, we're still going to post a notice of quorum. Chair Romero, myself, will be attending the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments on their agenda. So I don't think you received this. This is old business, discussion regarding the JPA approval from the Village of Eagleness and the Town of Red River. Discussion regarding the possible expansion of the Santa Fe Film Office with Executive Director Jennifer LaBra Tapia from the Santa Fe Film Office. Discussion of Regional Fire and Emergency Medical Services and Response Team Department. Discussion, consideration, approval of open meetings, resolution 24-1 for the Enchanted Circle of Governments. Just the standard of going around the table from the different regional entities as well. And then also, we have on March 28th, and we'll be posting a notice of quorum for this at Baton Hall at, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. There is, New Mexico DOT is providing a project update on the New Mexico 68 Road Project. They've asked the Chamber, Taos Main Street, Law Foundation to help get out the word. And so, ask you guys, if you want to hear about the project, please attend that.
What was the date on that again?
March 28th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And I can forward you the email I got from the Chamber, and we can also put it on your calendars as well, if that's helpful. And last week, we did get notification that for fiscal year 2024, there was a federal fiscal year that was delayed due to their budget. We did receive funding, congressionally-directed funding. Senator Heinrich's office did let us know that we received 234,000 for a fire and rescue department to purchase Wildland Fire Engine, the UTV that will aid in our fire mitigation efforts. We received 1.5 million for Custia Volunteer Fire Department to construct that new fire station. And we've been, Mr. Silva, along with Mr. Cordova, been in that planning process. And I think they already have about a million to put towards that project as well. For this year's funding cycle of congressionally-directed spending, we did put in money for, for BLM to do that John Dunn Switchback Road Study on the west side of the hills. We've put it in three years in a row. And so we're going to put, we're putting that into Senator Lujan's office as well. We're doing community centers. And we also put in for Blueberry Hill Road. And then we also put in for our housing project on the nine acres as well. And thanks to Chris, Jason, and Jessica for those submissions and working on that. They carried the load on that the last week and a half. Chris is making some good progress on the community center RFPs. And so we're not quite ready to present on that, but he's, we sat down yesterday and talked briefly on it, and he's pretty close to wrapping that up for a few of the community centers on the process that we're going to follow there. And, and we just hired two new dispatchers this week as well. So I think we're only too short now in dispatch, so we're making some good progress there as well. And I stand for any questions?
Questions for Commissioner, for County Manager? Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Manager. Lots going on, good reports. Thank you very much. Just wanted to clarify, the Transportation Project Fund cycle that you referred to where we put in for Blueberry Hill, and thank you for that. I know we keep trying to get that done. You said that there was $7 million for our district. Might be worth just clarifying what, what that means for that $7 million? It's not $7 million for Taos County projects, right?
It is for Ria Riba County, Los Alamos County, Santa Fe County, City of Santa Fe, City of Espanola, all the tribal governments that are in that corridor. Ria Riba, I think we got them also. There is, what, 13 entities, do you see one there?
So $7 million for 13 entities with projects?
Right. And then I'll bring up, I know the county, Questa, put in projects, and let me see who else. So the RTD is also part of it. So Questa, the RTD, Los Alamos, Santa Fe County, and Taos County with entities as of 4/13 yesterday that submitted projects.
I'm sorry. May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Do you know what that total of asks from all that? I mean, we know we have 7 million in the pot. I'm just wondering, are we, you know, if you add up all the total of?
We don't yet, but we can ask Mr. Million for it. He's the new transportation planner. He'd probably give us that number. We asked for 2 million. We haven't done our oral presentations yet.
Okay.
So we submitted the form. So those of us that submitted applications will have to do an oral presentation to the rest of the group, and then the whole group can, will rate and rank us.
Yeah. And my question is merely just to see, you know, how much we're asking for and how competitive this, this process is.
Right. I had a question from a constituent on the 75,000 that was appropriated out of capital outlay for the feasibility study for the shelter. What, what has been done? Do we have an idea how we'll get, who will do the feasibility study and what is the timetable?
We don't know who will do the feasibility study yet. That would probably go out for a request for proposal. There's probably not an entity out there that, that has ever built, well, I guess technically you could hire a facility builder, and they would have to do the research on what it would cost to build a building. So there's, we haven't established a timetable on that because we still haven't received any of those grant agreements. We probably won't receive any of that until early part of the fall, maybe even late fall. It kind of varies on when we receive the grant agreements. Sometimes as early as August.
Yeah. So it's early on, but I did have that question that people want to know. So, okay, any further questions? Commissioner Brush.
Mr. Chair, and yeah, you sparked a question for me. We had allocated in the Sheriff's Office budget for the year that we're currently in a certain amount for the RFP that normally stray hearts would respond to, right? Is that amount still available for other contractual services? For example, if we would have an agreement with Waggin Tales and Palacay to take a dog or two, an animal or two, is that, is that full amount or at least part of that amount still available to be used for this kind of effort because it's getting even worse out there?
The majority of the amount is still there. If it's been used, it's been on Spain neutering programs.
Okay. Do you know if there's been any, any progress in trying to have, like, short-term small contracts with other organizations, entities that could house an animal or two per our obligations to do so? I know it might not be a question for you, but it kind of is.
I'm just starting to know how to answer that.
Okay.
Any other questions for?
Just if you could, thank you, Chair. What's the date on that Council of Government meeting again? Please, just so I can?
It's Thursday, the 28th, at 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM. Okay. Zoom, right? Or virtually?
Zoom, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. And I'll move on into Commissioner's Reports and Matters Quarterly Update. I asked the manager to put this on because there are a lot, a lot of things going on in the county, and I like to get a focus and kind of a summary of what is all, all is going on in the first three months of the year already over. And then Commissioner Vehill and myself also were invited to present to the Rontrose Neighborhood Association on April 7th at 1:00, kind of give a county report. So there's kind of a preview to that. So I'll be real quick. Probably the most important thing that happened the first three months, on January 30th, 2024, the BLM building was purchased by the county to serve as the Sheriff's Office site. Staff has begun the process for remodel of the Sheriff Office Building. The showcase projects, we heard about those already today, the cemetery and the Wetter Cemetery and then the County Courthouse. They are on track to be completed, the cemetery by the end of this year, 2024, and the historic courthouse on the plaza by the end of 2025. I think these are realistic projections. The detox center renovations, this one, we're kind of stuck. The opening on the construction and the opening are kind of on hold pending the receipt of federal funding. An environmental impact statement needs to be done, needs to be completed before that funding is released. So we're working on that. The three community centers were mentioned also by the manager. They do have $100,000 apiece for improvements. And that, I guess, the grant, grant agreements and RFPs are being prepared there. Roads, I think we're, we have a work study that we want to schedule for April to deal with all things road, roads. So, and there are a lot of questions about roads, but that work study will be for that purpose. We had an $800,000 amount that was earmarked for improvements at Juan Ay Gonzalez Ag Building. I'm not sure what the status of that one is, but I think it is ongoing. The hospital is a big one. We had some big appropriations this year. 15 million has been appropriated for renovations at Holy Cross Hospital Medical Center. And also, another additional 5.7 million was appropriated through the Healthcare Authority Department to subsidize the, the Holy Cross Hospital operations budgets. And so for financial transparency, we have ensured that we're going to be getting financial reports from the hospital in April, July, October, and January. And finally, the planning department has a couple initiatives going, was mentioned also, the, the comprehensive plan and survey. If you haven't already, please do the survey for that part of it. And then also, the planning department has the part, the, the policy on short-term rentals ongoing. So that's just a real quick summary. Did I miss anything? Is there anything else anyone else would like to add?
I think that's a good summary. I certainly have some notes. We can certainly make sure that we talk.
And it's good to get this information out to the community. And that's what we'll be doing at, at that April 7th presentation at, at the Topo Community Center. Okay, we'll move on into Commissioner announcements, Commissioner announcements.
I think new business to be considered. Let's skip new business to be considered.
Okay, new business? New business we consider to future commission meetings? Any, anything?
There's so much going on. I think that we're good. I'm afraid to add.
Okay, then we will go then again to Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I try as often as I can to go to the Rio Fernando Collaborative Meetings, which are every other month, and just excited to share that this Saturday, the 23rd, is the semi-annual Rio Fernando Cleanup Day from 9:00 to noon. You can meet right out here in the parking lot or at the Taos Land Trust, and the crews will, like, start working and then meet in the middle. It's, it's always an interesting, fun time, grubby time, so wear your waders and your gloves, bring your gloves. But lunch will be provided at the Taos Land Trust. And there's always some, like, learning involved as well. So there's always something about the riparian landscape and the, the role that this river plays in our community right over there. So please join again Saturday, Rio Fernando Cleanup, 9:00 AM to noon. See you there.
Anything on announcements?
Yes, I do. So I wanted to, actually, you know what? I'm going to go ahead and incorporate it into my report.
Okay, then we'll just move, go ahead and move to the Board Committee Report, Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area Board. Go ahead.
So yes, I just wanted to share that Corilie Artega, who represents, I'm sorry, represents the Town of Taos, and as you all know, I'm appointed from our organization here. We are going to be doing a, a project here in Taos, and we're going to be building ornos. So really excited about this. We are, we have put together a proposal, and the three areas or locations of where these ornos will be placed is, one will be at the Telpa Community Center. As we all know, Telpa Community Center is a community center that's really well-used. And so we have every belief that they will be using this, this ornol. The other location is Martinez Hacienda. And also, as they do a lot of, or they are gearing up to do more this year, we believe that will also, that ornol will be used as well there. The third location is, is at the Arroyo Seco Community Center. And so Corilie and I attended a meeting last night, and we did ask permission because we certainly want folks to, we want to know that folks are interested in this, in us coming in and using this as an opportunity for educational purposes and, and really just showing how they're made. And, and finally, hopefully, we'll be doing some cooking demos as well. And so just wanted to share that, that is just bringing some of the resources from, from this organization back to Taos. And so that's what I'd like to share in regards to that. Just a couple of dates. We have some tentative dates on when this will be taking place. So we currently have Telpa, I'm sorry, we're going to start with building out the, or making the adobes at the Martinez Hacienda, and that is scheduled for May 15th. It's on a Wednesday. It's also San Isidro Day. And so we're going to commence at 8:30, hoping to end about 5:30. We do believe this is going to be a two-day process. We will also pause to do a water blessing ceremony and a potluck for those that are participating. And we are also going to be inviting students to come out and take a look at what's happening. So the next one will be at the, the next process will, we're going to commence the ornol construction, and we'll start at the Telpa Community Center. And the tentative date there is June 13th. It's on a Thursday. Once again, we'll start at 8:30 in the morning, hoping to finish that off at 5:30. It might take two days as well because they are building a base. And so, you know, it's, I believe we're going to have to definitely amend this schedule. The Arroyo Seco Community Center, we're trying to lock down a date, and this, of course, is going to be contingent on the builder himself and when he can get out there. But we will bring awareness to the entire community so folks can go on out and take a look at what's taking place. And we hope to have a demos and celebration at each of these locations once these ornos are up.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Move to the North Central Regional Transit District Board.
Yes, and I would like to thank Ron for reaching out to me, and I know he could not attend, and certainly that's why we have alternates. And Ron is very diligent in always attending these meetings. So I did have an opportunity as an alternate to be there, and it reminded me how important transportation is and what they do. So I just wanted to, you know, hats off to all those folks that really put a lot of hours into trying to figure out how to get transportation from point A to point B. Also, a quick, a good reminder that 100% Taos community transportation is one of the surviving and thriving necessary vital services. And so, but I did want to just give a quick update that was given that day in regard to the Taos project. It looks like that project is moving along. Concrete has been laid, and the utilities have been laid. And so I believe there is temporary power, and I know Ron, Commissioner Mascherini keeps up with this, so if I'm saying or not saying enough, please let me know. But it looks like saying enough, please let me know. But it looks like they have temporary power, and this project is full force ahead and on schedule as far as I know. Anything else, Commissioner Mascheranos, that I've left out?
That's, that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all. And then we'll move to item 16. Taos County Board of Commissioners may convene in closed session. Discussion regarding potential lease of property. This matter may be discussed in executive session under open meetings, Act of Section 1015188, which allows for discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal, disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. So I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion? I make a motion to go into.
Motion by Commissioner Behill. Second, second by Commissioner Mascheranos. Madam Clerk, which call the role, please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranos?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And the time is 10, 10:42. So we'll, we'll convene back after executive session. Thank you all. I entertain a motion to come out of executive session back into open session. Motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascheranos. Madam Clerk, which call the role?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranos?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Now motion to, for the, we need attorneys report, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. We're in closed session, and we discussed those matters that were listed on the agenda. No final decisions were made.
Motion for attorneys report.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascheranos. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranos?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And I believe we're at the point of adjournment?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Romero to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Behill. All in favor, in the case of saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 11:34. Thank you.